Thanks, Rachel and Melissa, for inviting me to this great session. I was, I really enjoyed the previous two talks from Christine and Will. They're, it's an incredible perspective. I love having this translational type of session at the meeting and just seeing the front lines, that they're on the front lines with trying to use the omics data and all the analysis that's coming out for patient care. I don't really need to go over this. You've all seen many different cases, but I wanted to, but I'm going to show some analysis for this particular patient. So, just to walk you through it, it's a, you know, a typical metastatic prostate cancer patient that walks into a doctor's office, got the first line of therapy. So, in prostate cancer, it's driven by androgen, testosterone, and the prostate tissue is wired up to proliferate when the androgen receptor binds that ligand. And so, the first type of treatment is to shut down the testosterone in the body. And that works for a while, and then there's, you know, recurrence, and they measure prostate serum albumin, this PSA, to try to track the tumor's growth, right? Not the perfect type of indicator, but an indicator nonetheless. And for this, for these metastatic patients, sure enough, they resist the first line of treatment, and then they'll get some other treatment still, in this case, aimed at androgen. So, abiraterone sort of blocks the, you know, it blocks hormone synthesis, so, almost all hormone synthesis, by the way. So, they'll get this treatment, and they need to get supplemental hormone, which makes you start thinking, what leads to the next round of resistance, right? It could be they have other growth receptors that are responding to the supplemental hormones that they get, and so on. And then, for this particular patient, they even recur, they recur on that, maybe due to some of these other types of alternate responses, and they get another androgen type of blocker, this time enzalutamide they're being considered for. And this one actually blocks the receptor now, right? So, this is sort of a typical situation. And then, in some work that I'm involved in, in the Stand Up to Cancer and Prostate Cancer Foundation, the biopsies are taken from where they, where they detect metastatic disease, and then they go through a panel, through the, of assays, through the pathology report. So, you know, proliferative markers like keratin, or they look for, in this case, a small cell, or what they call neuroendocrine phenotype, by staining chromatingranin. So, this particular patient shows a subtype like that. The androgen receptor is not really amplified anymore in the METs, and then they're not detecting PSA, for example. So, I just wanted to go over that. And when, you know, we're sort of handed the data, then, that's collected, a lot, a lot of NGS types of data, like RNA sequencing, exome sequencing, and so on. And we're asked as informatics specialists, what do you, what can you do for this patient, right? Interpret that, that sequence, that RNA sequence, or the mutations that we found, and tell us what therapy to give. And you're sort of presented with this N equal 1 case. Everybody's talking about the N of 1. Well, you know, we're, a lot of us are statisticians, and there's no power with N equal 1, and so what do you do? And do you actually pay attention to all these details from their, from these case histories, and which ones are important, and which ones aren't as important for selecting the therapy? Like I mentioned, they had supplemental hormone therapy. Is that, is that actually important? So, the, I don't know if this is a solution, but one way to, that we're approaching this subject is to try to drape onto a background of lots of other analyses that's been collected, and I'll show examples with the Cancer Genome Atlas Project. Or, I mean, I love this study. Will talked about the basic study, where they take all comers, and you have lots of patients that you're looking at. And you have this tapestry of genomics data that you can sort of consult for this particular patient. And then the challenge is trying to match up the best kind of avatar you have in your database with this patient, and then maybe tweak on the themes that you identify. And so, that'll kind of be the theme of this talk. And I don't know if it's the, it's not, certainly not the only way to do it, but it's, it's what we have right now, and we can, we can actually approach it this way as informatics folk. So, the one slide overview really of TCGA, I think most people know what it is, but we're collecting about 25 different tumor types. Some of them are rare cancers. I think we need to expand in that angle. This is all primary disease, and maybe a focus later will be to get metastatic samples characterized, and so on. And then, they're characterized at many different centers with genome sequencing, both exome, and then 10% get whole genome, and RNA sequencing, microRNA sequencing, and some copy number chips, methylation chips. That's TCGA. So, many different hands studying the same disease process. And when you start analy, get, you know, when you, when somebody drops into your lap all these types of data, of course, it's, it can be overwhelming, and there's, you know, a combinatorial number of ways to compare these data sets, right? That goes up by a power law, the number of different data types you have, you have exponentially different number of ways to use it. And you can find, you know, yourself thinking about, well, what do I do with that data, too? What genes are on or off? And you've got all these different types of data to use, and you can feel like you're in front of the stop sign. I don't know where the stop sign is, but, I mean, the stoplight, but, you know, are you supposed to cross the street or not, right? And so, you need, you need some way of interpreting this data, some, something that tells you whether, let's say, a gene or a pathway is active or not. So, the particular approach that we take in the lab and a lot of others, we're standing on the shoulders of giants here, is to utilize what we know about genetic circuits, and how they signal to each other. And this is a graph I stole from the first TCGA manuscript that Larry Donahue made. And you can, and the take-home message here that was somewhat inspiring for me was that even though every patient's got a different type of alteration in this glioblastoma, that you can see, if you look from the perspective of pathways, those mutations tell you a story, and there's a theme. And so, you know, almost all of the GBMs, 87%, had some problem in P53 signaling. They could have had an amplification of the inhibitor, or they could have actually had a deleterious knockout, a mutation in the P53 tumor suppressor, but they all lead to problems in apoptosis and senescence. And so, you can kind of look around at the hallmarks of cancer in this kind of sense, and see, and try to make sense of what's going on in the tumors. So, a pathway-based perspective is great to have, and folks like Chris Sander at Sloan-Kettering have done a great job collecting all these pathway resources from the literature and other places, and to, and compile them that, into a way that's useful for analysis. Now, of course, Larry Hunter loves to call, if you collect all of the interaction data, right, he calls this the ridiculum, or the hairball. And it's terrible for, for human beings, right? I mean, if you show this thing to biologists, I'm always shocked that even a biologist who studied, you know, made their lives work out of describing a particular process in the cell, they may not even appreciate all the different interconnections that their own lab found, that just how complicated it is. Luckily, computers love this stuff, right? And we can just sort of hand off these representations to a computer, and then use techniques that, you know, we saw, if you go to Donna Pear's Overton lecture, she was one of the pioneers in this. You can take these graphical models, use a quantitative part to it, and then help it kind of chug through the data and tell you, and try to focus in on where the themes are. And hopefully, you can gain some insights on what has gone wrong in a particular tumor type. So, my lab has also developed some of these methods based on, you know, the early work from folks like Donna, and Iran Sehgal, and Daphne Koller, and Neer Friedman. Actually, Neer wrote a nice article in Science, I think it's 10 years ago now, describing the uses of these types of models for bioinformatics. And so, then you can take several different types of data, integrate it onto a pathway model, and then sort of compress this data, right? This was all those different stoplights staring at us, and sort of try to interpret it from the pathway perspective, and now have one matrix of patients by activated pathways, or complexes, or processes that you can use. Downstream analyses can use them for machine learning, or learning about, about patients, and so on. So, our model's called Paradigm, and the, the one contribution, I guess, the major one of Paradigm is it sort of unrolls out the central dogma, so you can drape in different parts of your measurements about genes into one activity of that, of that protein, that the gene, of the gene product. And then, link together the genes by their regulatory logic from collections like Pathway Commons. And then, let the, let the graphical model do belief propagation, and then try, and then make inferences about the activity of different components of this whole big, huge graphical model. And so, the first time we ran this on the ovarian cancer dataset, this was the second tumor type analyzed by, by the TCGA project. The model sort of honed in on this FOXM1 mitotic regulator, which was, it's a pretty well-known pathway in cancer. It's a, you know, as I said, it, it, it regu, it's a transcription factor that's sort of a central regulator of mitosis. And so, this is one of those cases where they said, well, show us something we don't know. They, I don't think they appreciated it really that much in ovarian cancer particularly. But, but one of the interesting things with FOXM1 was it's got two isoforms, and one sort of promotes cell cycle progression, and the other one sort of feeds through, you know, the BRCA genes, and, and regulates DNA repair. And it, and so, and FOXM1 itself is actually downstream of all these repair, these, these processes that detect damaged DNA, like ATM and ATR. And so, it's sort of an interesting story that you're getting about the, about these ovarian tumors that have lots of copy number changes, and they need lots of repair to happen, and then the components like FOXM1 may be getting upregulated but not being spliced correctly, and so then you can imagine the type of crosstalk that might be happening in these tumors. So, myself, and, and Chris Sander, and Ilya Shmulevich co-led a bit of work from TCGA called the Pan-Cancer Project, where we, where we decided to collect all the data together to, like this, like the type of study that Bill's doing with the base, that Will's doing with the basic study, look at all the different tumors we had at that point in TCGA, and build a library of signatures, and look for patterns, and so on. And the, I think the concept we had in the beginning was, you know, we could, by putting all these things together, we could define a new molecular taxonomy based on the pathways that were misregulated in these tumors. And I think to some part, we, we did manage to do that, and then you could imagine, you know, taking a patient and looking it up on this, on this hierarchy. And this was a, a large amount of work from, from many folks, and I just wanted to summarize it quickly to give you a background of, of what we can do for, for the N equal 1 case. So, some of the results that came out of this work from Gaddy Getz's group, we could look at just the frequency of tumors, and the mutation spectrum again, and see, you know, melanomas obviously have the highest amount, and they show the UV signatures of mutations, and so on. And then, some of the head and neck squamous, like Christine was talking about, also very mutation-driven. And then, on the other end of the spectrum, some of the leukemias, you know, are less mutation-driven. And, and this sort of tells us something about the processes in these tumors. You know, other work followed on those signatures to show certain enzymes, like ApoBc leave telltale signatures in the genome as well, which is a very interesting story from the, from the Stratton Group. And then, Gaddy's group could also take a look at this and correlate it with other aspects of the tumors, and they noticed, just like in 1,000 Genomes, that genes near late replication forks tend to have more mutations. Well, why that is, I think is still up for debate. Maybe the nucleotide pool is running out at that point, and so it's just more slop that happens at those genes. And also, you know, you could see, so there's a positive correlation with late replication timing. And then, as you might expect, you know, a negative correlation with expression. So, genes that are expressed are under more, perhaps, negative selection to get mutated, and so on. And so, you could now start factoring in these types of trends that you see across all of these tumor types, when you interpret individual mutations in a particular patient. What, you know, you're trying to separate out drivers from passengers, but you have to factor in the background rate, not just the background rate of the, of the patient's tumor, but of the gene itself, and where it exists in the genome. And so, I think we gained a lot of insight into these, into these processes by looking at these tumors. And Lee Ding's group at Wash U could then publish a set of significantly mutated genes that I think is a good list to consult if you're building a new mutation panel, you know, from AmpliSeq or something for your, for your, for a, for a clinical trial, for example. You might want to consult this list for what genes we think are important in these solid tumors, at least. And, and then, the Barcelona group led by Nuria Bigas Lopez could take many different methods, including, you know, things like Mutation Assessor, or Chasum, like Rachel's group has developed, or other things, to assess whether, what's the impact of these mutations, and build up a consensus on what we think are drivers versus passengers. And, and then have a nice list, a list of those things. And I think one of the take-home messages here, this kind of shows you the frequency across the, the different tumors, is many of these, these genes, like Will was mentioning, aren't, aren't mutated very frequently in any one particular tumor type. That's these stacks of different color, but as you put it together across the tumors, then the power starts increasing, and we can really, hopefully, identify most of these driver genes. And the Lander Group actually has a nice paper out, I think about six months ago, where, you know, they're arguing that we don't actually need to increase, to get at most of these infrequently mutated driver genes, you know, if we increase the amount of sequencing by not a huge amount, maybe tenfold more, we could actually start getting all of these driver genes, which I think is a major challenge of the immediate future, to get these, these catalogs together. And then, among all the other interesting trends, I like to show this one from Chris Sander's group. They, they found what they call the cancer hyperbola, which, which is when they plot, in this, in this case, it's different tumor samples are the dots, and if you plot them together, you can see copy number alterations versus mutations. You tend to see it's kind of mutually exclusive, so you can have a lot of copy number changes, or a lot of mutations, but you can't, but these tumors don't seem like they can tolerate both. And so, why that might be is, it could be an interesting therapeutic way to leverage things. And they could define a new taxonomy based on this dominant piece of data, a piece, this trend of the data, and then first classify the M class, which are mutation-driven, from the C class, which are the, the, the copy number-driven, and then sort of refine on a theme from there, to really try to get at a molecular classification of these tumors. Ben Raphael's group could take the, the mutations, drape them on a background networks from these protein-protein interaction networks, and then search them for themes. And one theme that was interesting that came out, when they looked for these sub-networks, is, I think, a more, a heightened appreciation for the chromatin remodeling set of genes that, you know, either affect histone marks, or play a role in, in silencing chromatin, and it seems like many of these tumors have these, have these changes. So, this shows you all the, just, you know, how many different tumor types have the, the alterations in this particular chromatin remodeling group. You can see, again, just like in the, in the plot before, the different colors of the tumor types, that you would, you would be, it would be really rough to identify this in one tumor type by itself. You really need the power of, of the pan-cancer analysis. So, the consortium led by Chris Benz, Chuck Peru, and myself, had an opportunity to take all of this pan-cancer data, and I'm just showing you the six major platforms we had, put it all together, and try to define, what's a, you know, how are you going to define subtypes with these data sets, so that we can use it as a library, like I mentioned in the beginning, to consult a particular patient's profile against, whether it be mRNA, microRNA, protein, and so on. So, Katie Holdley and Chuck's group was able to take sort of a clustering of all these things, and she has this analysis called Cluster of Clusters, and the assignments, we call them COCA. And so, you just kind of cluster this matrix again, and there's some nice properties, and maybe not some nice properties, about how to do the clustering this way. When you do it, you basically get 13 different clusters out of the data. 11 of them are worth looking at. There's a couple that are kind of tiny. We use 12 different tumor types, so you're thinking, oh, you got, you got about the same number of clusters as you got tumor types, right? And sure enough, actually, when you look at this data, and we've clustered this on their own, you, you tend to see that the, that the individual clustering from each of the different platforms tend to agree, so if we clustered them on their own, you can, you tend to get the same type of clustering, or then, or if you do it together, you kind of get a refinement on that. And tissue, as maybe it wouldn't surprise folks, really dominates these, these subtypes. Another way to look at it is to kind of put this on a map. We have a, we've made a map now called the tumor map, where each sample is a hexagon in this grid, and you lay it out with kind of force-directed placement based on molecular similarity. I'm just sort of trying to zip to that. We tested out with breast cancer subtypes, it really worked nicely. The colors here show you those dominant transcriptionally-based subtypes for, for the breast cancer, based on Chuck Peru's PAM50 subtypes. So, we could build this map for the pan-cancer dataset based on this, the integrated data, and the colors now are the, are the tissues of origin, so you can see, you know, the clusters are really colored uniformly, right? So, again, the, the tissues are dominating these clusters. Now, if you, if I summarize the results of this, most of the tumors, I would say 90% actually kind of map next to their tumor type of, their tissue type, right, by this clustering. So, you know, that's sort of the boring result, right? But there's some exceptions, so, I think we expected this from the TCGA study already. Colon and rectum look very similar transcriptionally, and they kind of map together, and are indistinguishable by these six platforms. Head and neck, and lung, we heard a lot about head and neck squamous cancers, those kind of map right in, onto each other as well, the head and neck, and the lung squamous tumors. And then, I think one of the interesting cases so far, now, of course, this, this dataset is still kind of small as far as the coverage of tissue types. The bladder cancers actually did show sort of a divergence and a convergence, if you will. Most of them kind of map on their own, but, but then, there's a subset of the tumors that, that map to lung adenos, and then there's another subset that map to the lung squamous, to the, to the head and neck lung, and lung squamous area. I think another, another important finding here, too, is that the breast cancers on this grid of different tumor types, the basal breast cancers really do map far away from their, from the, from the luminol, and so they almost look like their own complete tissue type, right, on this map. There are, there are distinct copy number differences that define these integrated clusters, and so we've mined some of that data. Ben's group ran their HotNet algorithm, an updated version of it, actually, so we could sort of delineate what are the mutational pathways that are, that are relevant for these different tumor types. And I showed one, but the chromatin remodelers sort of distinguish these squamous-like tumors, where you could look at the, sort of an integrated set shared among many different tumor types. Each of the, sort of the wedges in the pie show you what, what tissue types that we, which, I'm sorry, which integrated subtype share these alterations. So, that's a nice one to consult. So, even though the minority of tumors map to, sorry about that, map to, you know, a different area, and the majority map to just one-on-one where they're supposed to, we, we still found that there's prognostic information. Now, it's, it's no surprise that, that, you know, the, you know, if you get different cancers in different parts of the body, we already knew that there is differences in survival outcome, obviously. So, tissue itself carries, you know, survival information. So, the integrated clusters also do, obviously, but they're correlated with, with the tissue. So, now you have to ask yourself, are, does it offer any other independent information? And in this, in this case, it does. So, you know, if you take the clinical information only, you still get, you get a boost when you add tissue information as far as predicting survival. And then, if you add on to that the integrated subtypes, you're still gaining a, you know, a small amount, because there's only 10% of the tumors mapping differently, but, but it is an important remapping of those tumors. And so, when you look further into this, remember, I told you the bladder cancers are the ones that diverge, so, does it actually matter for the bladder cancers? So, here's, here's actually where the bladder cancers go on that tumor map, right? They go to their own island, and then they're going with the squamous, head and neck squamous group, and some go to the lung adeno group. In fact, it does matter, so, that, the bladder cancers that sort of mapped to the bladder-only island in that previous graph have a better survival outcome than the ones that are mapping with the lung ends, lung adenos, and the head and neck squamous tumors. So, the, this integrated subtyping is carrying some information that's important. And we can look up, then, you know, what, what distinguishes these squamous tumors, and what's shared with the bladders, and you see things like 3P loss, or telltale mutations, again, in these chromatin remodelers that I mentioned earlier, that, that could be distinct targets for these, for these, for the, for these folks that have bladder cancers that map sort of different than the other bladder cancers. So, that leads me to, you know, what do you do? We've heard all these cases about patients that have particular molecular profiles, and can we use maps like this now to, to develop treatment? And so, the first thing that you get into is, well, you know, with their distinct set of mutations, which ones are the passengers, which ones are the drivers? Can we figure out which ones look like gain-of-function, loss-of-function? And Will showed you a different categorization into four categories. You know, if it's not category 1 or 2, what do you do about that? And can pathway analysis tell you something? So, here's one particular example that you can do for, like, let's say it's a category 1 mutation, where we know about the gene, and we have pathway information. We look upstream of the pathway, or downstream of the pathway in this case, and we see that it looks like it's dysfunctional. If you look upstream of the pathway, and it looks like the regulators are really screamingly on because of feedback circuitry, then we can look, you know, if we look at that on its own, we can compare the two pathway analyses and, and see this, this discrepancy between what you would infer from the upstream regulators, from what you would infer from the targets, and we call this a shift score. And then, you can score some, some of the, some of these test cases for yourself. So, here's retinoblastoma mutants in GBM, and the inference on the outside is, is the shift between the logic of the upstream from the downstream analysis, and you can see that this would be predicted as, as a loss-of-function case. Kind of going quickly through here, based on time. Or, you know, for a, for a, an oncogene like NF2L2, you would see a particular upregulation for the mutants. This time, these are the patients that are mutated in NF2L2. Each of these tick marks is a different patient, forgot to mention that. So, now you can go through a cohort and measure the shift score, and the point on this is that even though you have a low sample size for these mutations, right, this is kind of that long tail, you have some pretty big deviations from what you expect from the regulators, from what you're seeing downstream of the gene. You know, like for MET, like we heard about earlier, maybe these, maybe these patients should, you know, should be considered for co-targeting, like Christine was talking about. You can do this in the pan-cancer sense, so we took all NF2L2, there's, these are the mutants in NF2L2, and you can see this is the tumor tissue of origin here, several tissues of origin have it, and they share this signature. Now, let's say you're going for a category 3 or 4 mutation, like Will was talking about. You don't know anything about it. You can just, you first develop a machine learning model like this that recognizes NF2L2 gain-of-function, and then what my student did was mapped all events onto the shift score, and you can see this other tick mark on the outside is the best correlated event of anything in the whole set of data we collected for TCGA. And that event happens to be keep 1 mutations, and that correlated the best with NF2L2. So, in this case, actually, we know keep 1 is actually in the pathway with NF2L2. They, it's like, they form a complex together. If you, and you can do kind of GSEA analysis, and so on, so keep 1 was the most positively correlated, call 3 is the next one, and you can see that's also in the complex. So, I think for, when we have a hook into a, into a particular tumor type like NF2L2, we can build our machine learning models, and then fish out other, other events that are correlated with those, with those things we know about, to start categorizing and expanding these, these, these other unknown cases. Now, I have no idea what NPM1 is, but I can, but it looks like it's mutually exclusive with, with NF2L2 mutations, right? So, that should help you kind of tease out what we think are the, maybe the important mutations from not. So, if we go back to a patient, and we sift through all the mutations we had, for this patient, we had like a P53 mutation, had some germline analysis on HER2, ERBB2, and, and then a notch 1 heterozygous mutation. So, what do we do with this? And I'm going to end on this example. This is sort of a little bit, it's not fabricated, but we aren't acting on this yet, but just as sort of a teaser on what, where we might go with this type of data. So, I mentioned in this dream team, we also have RNA-seq data, so we get some mutations from RNA-seq as well. But from, we can, we can figure out what genes are upregulated or not in this patient's dataset, and try to remove any noisy genes by looking at what subtype from the mRNA data that patient maps onto, and you can look at what themes might be, might be going on in that expression signature. And you can look at what themes might be, might be going on in that expression signature. But why, the question is why do we have these mutations in the patient and do they have any relationship with the, the genes that are, that are, have altered expression? And so what you can do is you can do kind of master regulator analysis like Andrea Calafano does to look for what transcription factor combinations describe the, the transcriptional profile you're seeing and maybe build up. And so these are the transcription factors that sort of describe these things. MiB is implicated and we can see androgen receptors in there, so that's sort of a good positive check. But there's other doubt, you know, other transcription factors that seem like maybe they're implicated in this particular patient's tumor. But you still have a gap to fill. So how do you fill the gap from the mutations to those altered transcription factors? There are many methods to, to try to figure this out. One method that we published, and I've listed some of the here, from here, from, you know, from like Joel Bader's group and, and Ben Raphael's group. We have a method where we try to take the mutations and we try to take the activated transcription factors and we put them on a network that we know about and then we use a double diffusion process to identify what's in between, like what helps link these together from what we know about, right? And so then we can try to fill in the holes. And so you might see a junk kinase, MAPK8 here might be implicated for targeting. And so one, maybe one way of getting this personal network for this patient that we started talking about in the beginning, you know, maybe you start thinking about trastuzumab because they have ERBB2 or maybe you start hitting some of these kinases that are implicated as really important for linking the mutated signature with the activated transcriptional profile that you see. That would be one way to do it. So we actually took this patient, though we mapped it on this, this integrated map. And I think it's very interesting. So we had eight samples at the time and they all mapped kind of to this new prostate cancer land and that's sort of expected because, as I told you, tissue drives the clustering. If you map this particular patient with, and I showed you, they have an ERBB2 germline mutation, but it turned out they also had a somatic alteration as well. They actually mapped into breast cancer land, or island. And this is actually near the HER2 tumors. So transcriptionally, this, this patient does look like, you know, a HER2 breast cancer, which is sort of interesting. You know, whether the clinicians will follow up on this or not and actually treat them with, with their HER2 inhibitors, I don't know. So I'll just summarize now and just say that, you know, for the N equal one case, I mean, what I've argued for here is take, you know, N equal infinity if you can, of course, and build these libraries of signatures and then with as many, as much possible data as we can. I mean, we're blessed with TCGA that we have so much integrated data. Or, or develop trials like you saw with the basic study, all comers, and try to maximally be able to interpret what kind of subtype you have and it may be, it may be that the tissue is important or not. We need, obviously for the folks in the audience who are informatics developers, we need ways to assess which mutations we should care about. You know, I, I still think there's a lot of mileage to push on the pathway perspective. And then how do we actually link together? I showed you sort of hand wavy arguments for trying to get a patient specific network by, you know, figuring out why the, the genomic lesions that happen in a tumor led to the, all these other molecular phenotypic types of data, like the transcriptional profiles that we see. And then I'm, I'm also involved in looking at, you know, the quote, rest of the genome. So what I, all the stuff I showed you basically is looking at the exomes and clearly some of the, you know, we want to investigate more of what's happening with the pathogens like we saw with HPV and HBV. There's other pathogens that might be involved in, in, in these tumors and other regulatory elements that are affected and so on, to get more of the dark matter charted out in these tumors. And so I'll just, I'll just end there. Let me just race through this to my acknowledgements then.
I'm ready for the discussion.
Okay. So Rachel says we're ready for the discussion section. Do you, are you going to introduce that, Rachel?